My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Giles would you lead us?
Thank you. I all bow your heads. Dear Father, we come to you today most graciously and humbly. We come to you in this most trying time, asking for your, to give us guidance, asking for us to, to give us honesty, asking for discipline in our city. Lord, we ask that you continue to keep our workers safe. Lord, we thank you for all of the things that you have given us in this great community we live in, but in this time, Lord, we need you. We need you now. This community is dealing with some serious issues, and we need you to help us resolve them. We ask that you give us your peace and your love and your guiding hand in your most high and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
The next agenda item is roll call of members and the determination of quorum. Let the record reflect that there are nine counselors present and that we have a quorum. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana open door policy, and copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. Also, for any citizens wishing to speak under citizens' comments later in the agenda, please sign in using the sign in sheet located at the back of the meeting room. The next agenda item is comments of council members and special recognitions. Do we have any comments, special recognitions, or resolutions this evening?
Mr. President, I have a couple.
Yes.
When we had the first snow, there was a, there's a curb going around Sunnyside, and it seems like the drivers, when they go through there, they always hit that guardrail, and the city is constantly replacing that guardrail. And recently, they had a car towed from there. So I'm wondering, do we have any, does the city have any litigation or anything with that guardrail always being damaged? Because I know the people have to have insurance. So I'm thinking maybe we need to start going after their insurance company so we wouldn't, the city won't have to keep footing the bill to that guardrail that has to be replaced. And I think there are some signs that says sharp curve or something that might help a little, but it's, it's been ongoing and it just keeps happening. And I don't want the city to always have to throw the money out to keep that guardrail fixed. And then I have another one about the water bill. January the 31st, we usually get our water bill. The first week in, I believe it's, it would have been February. Well, we didn't get it. So now I had a constituent call me, and I told them to call the water company. So they did. The water company gave them the amount. I personally took her over to the kiosk out here, punched in her account number. Well, it was due that day. So she went ahead and, you know, we put the money in there and everything. My bill is not usually due. My due date is not usually until the 13th of the month. Well, I just happened to punch mine in, and mine was due the next day. So I went ahead and paid the bill. We never got the water bill. The water bill just recently came out, I believe last week, and those bills are due. So my question is, if the due date says one thing on the machine, and then you get the bill and it's due on the 18th of the month, I mean, what's going on? And then she questioned me again. She said, well, isn't the water company open where you can go in and pay your bill? And I said, no ma'am, it's not. And she says, why not? So that's another question that I wanted to bring forth with the council, too.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman. Do we have any other comments from the?
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Rick Wells.
Thank you. Couple of things. First off, I have been in conversation with NDOT for some time over these medians on Pendleton Pike, and I know they're not a very popular subject. But to the extreme, I suppose, in particular two businesses, and I've spoken on this sometime before, is Core on Mobile Home and then Fun Time Campers, which is directly across the street of Pendleton Pike. And you've got, you know, a mobile home company that brings in 80-foot mobile homes that are 16-foot wide, and then you've got a camping facility or store that customers are bringing in and out, you know, large campers, and this median has made it really difficult for them. I think I have gotten NDOT's attention, and I have spoken with the man, Mr. Johnson, about two days ago, I believe, and he is arranging a meeting that we're going to have in this building. I've already spoke to our police representative, tried to see about any accidents, what our accident rate is, if it's, if it's gotten better, if it's gotten worse since these medians have gotten in. I'd like to present, or present that to NDOT. I'd like to have the, hopefully the owners of these two companies show up at this meeting. If anybody from the administration would like to be present at this meeting, please reach out to me, and I'll make sure that you get a notice or an email of it when we arrange it. And the second thing that I have a concern about, or a question, I guess, clarification, is the recent news article in the Star over the bond payments and the checks having not clearing, mine being one of them. My understanding this was all, as I was being told, was due to a screenshot that was given to someone that put it on a Facebook site, and for security reasons that we had to, the bank had to check or red flag some of the checks that went out. Not sure why mine, you know, I've gotten a check for nine years, why mine all of a sudden had to be red flagged, but, and I also don't, what I don't understand, and I've asked this question, is this screenshot was sent out sometime either in September or October. So why are we having problems with checks with our banking system in Jan, mid-January? So if someone from the administration could speak to that, either now or, you know, during administration comments, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Wells. Greg, good night, Chief Staff. Yes, the screenshot was sent out earlier. We did not start the process of swi, we had to switch, start switching the bank accounts because of the numbers and the routing numbers were exposed. That's a long process, took weeks to get started, and so once it started, then that's why those checks, and the checks were referred to. I think you still get a hard copy che, an actual check.
Paper check, yeah.
Paper check, thank you. And that's why. So that's, that's the reason, the process is still ongoing, too. The accounts have not all been switched over. That was our main account. There was something else you asked about that's the, oh, just so you know, clarification, the, that problem caused the problems with the individual checks. Sharing that account information had nothing to do with the bond payments. The bond payments was human error.
Okay. The, so when did the bank was notified, I assume, right after this, this screenshot was made public?
I couldn't tell you the, reasonably after, within a few days. I can't say that.
That was like three months ago.
Well, it was, that was exposed sometime in December. I didn't even come on staff until the week of Thanksgiving, and it didn't happen the first week I was here. So sometime in December when that was exposed publicly, first week of December.
All right, thank you.
I'm guessing, first week. Anything else?
Thank you.
Do we have any other counselors that would like to make comments? All right, the next agenda item is the approval of minutes of the meeting of February 3rd, 2025. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting of February 3rd, 2025? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
All righty. We have a motion and a second? Who, I didn't hear who made the initial motion? Counselor Freeman?
Jennings.
Jennings, and then Freeman with the second? Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right. Please let the record reflect that we have a unanimous decision. The next agenda item is the signing of vouchers and approval of claims and authorizations of payments. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings. Thank you, Counselor Giles. Is there any further discussion? All righty. I will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All righty. We will proceed with a roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Aye.
Counselor Wells?
Nay.
Counselor Chavis?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Aye.
Counselor Kramer, aye.
Counselor Jennings?
Aye.
Counselor Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Crone?
Aye.
Counselor Missouri?
Aye.
All right. Please let the record reflect that we have an eight to one vote. The next agenda item is the reports of committees, and I understand that both of the Public Safety and the Administration Budget and Finance Committee met this evening. Do we have any reports for this evening's meeting?
The, the first meeting would be the Public Safety meeting, and that was at 5:30, and it was favorable to have the council look at it, review it.
So a favorable recommendation was given?
Yes.
For proposal ones?
For proposal ones, okay. All righty.
Finance Committee met at 5 o'clock PM this evening. We began discussion on the December monthly budget and the 2024 year-end budget. We tabled that discussion, and we will pick it up in mid-March to give the committee a chance to review the report that was provided during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chavis. The next agenda item is unfinished business, and we have the January 15th, 2025, signing of vouchers, approval of claims and authorizations of payment. As the council recall, this approval for the vouchers, approval of the claims and authorization of payment were not considered at the regular meeting for the common council on February 3rd. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Jennings and Counselor Freeman. Is there any further discussion?
Were the cover sheets updated?
Did you guys, I believe you were hour on the email, my question, did I get the email that was sent to me?
I don't recall.
Okay. Change to January 15th. I see one cover sheet dated January 15th. Yeah, and it doesn't look like it was sent to you guys, it was sent to me only.
So I will entertain a motion to move these to the next council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All right, thank you. All right, we will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor of putting these to the next council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let the record reflect that we have unanimous decision to move these vouchers to the next council meeting. All right. The next item is proposal number one, 2025, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number one, 2025, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10, 2024, An Ordinance Fixing Salaries of Appointed Officers and Employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year 2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposal was introduced at our February 3rd, 2025 meeting. The Public Safety Committee met earlier tonight and gave a favorable recommendation for this proposal. Do we have any questions or comments from counselors?
I, I just want to get confirmation that our legal counsel did fully review the ordinance and made sure that everything that needed to be addressed was addressed.
Hi, Michael Allen, trust my time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for clarification, this, we're basically giving raises here? No.
We, can we have someone from the administration, please, explain?
Thank you, Councilman Wells. So no, they're not, not giving wages. This is already budgeted for, based off the CBA. Some things were left off of, on, left off and not put on the salary ordinance. After review and clarification, we, we saw there was a mishap. So we're just making sure everything is lined up, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed, so that's, it's just a clarification.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? I will entertain a motion to approve or deny proposal number one?
So moved.
Second.
All righty. Thank you, Counselor Robinson for the first, and Counselor Jennings for the second. Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. All righty. Let the record reflect that proposal number one passes with unanimous vote. The next agenda item is the Controller's Office request for the Lawrence Common Council to void outstanding checks issued between, before December 31st of 2022. Is a representative from the Controller's Office here this evening to speak to this agenda item?
I would, more specifically, I would defer to the Controller's Office, but in front of you, there is a internal policy that I've shared with the council, which is aligned with SBOA and state statute requirement. The ministry is asking the council to void outstanding checks issued by the Controller's Office before December 31st, 2022. Like I said, the Controller's Office has an internal policy to align with SBOA's policy standards, the stale date check policy that went into effect in June of 2017. Indiana statute requires, and that's Indiana Code 5-11-10-5-1, outlines the need for that, for outstanding checks. It essentially says by November, no, excuse me, by March 1st, that checks be written off and must be listed and reviewed and approved by the Controller's Office and provided to a list to the fiscal body for disposal. And with, with that, I did ask staff in the Controller's Office if those outstanding checks need to be reissued. I think there's getting some clarification of that, but my understanding, the answer is no. So those checks do not need to be reissued, but I do know we're also asking SBOA for double checking that. So with that, if you have any particular questions about that, I will defer to the Controller's Office, but ultimately, these are disposals of checks that have essentially expired, they're about two, three years old, and as you can see at the list that was provided to you earlier, there's, the vast majority were duplicates. I know the Controller's Office replied to Counsel, Ms. Chavis' questions regarding what was the reason for that, as a matter of perf and pension. And so with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes.
It's kind of a simple question related to it. I just want to make sure I have understanding. So we void these checks, you're saying that you need to get more clarity for the state board accounts to see if those monies are owed to those people after they're voided, or, I'm just trying to figure out what we're really doing.
So the state doesn't really give us clarification on how to go ahead and proceed once those checks avoided. Believe the assumption is, these checks are two years old, they have not been cashed, so we just need to get them off the system. But it doesn't really explain, do we reissue that, or do we wait for them to contact the city and ask for the check? In that case, we can cut them new checks. So that's the clarification that we would like to seek from the state.
Okay, so we're basically trying to see if we can keep the money?
Correct. Because it's kind of like an unclaimed property, if I, if I may. It's been two years, no one has claimed it.
Well, that's what my mind, when you used the terminology, I wasn't, I really wasn't going to muddy the water, which, which you went there. I was thinking that it would go on the unclaimed property.
Yeah.
Site, and I'm not, I have no way trying to portray like I know where it's at. I just know that I've had a few bucks on there I found over the years.
So it doesn't, unfortunately, that statute doesn't extend to that point, and that's where, and that's typical, some of them with those state statutes, you just kind of have to get their actual interpretation.
Would we, would it be good integrity of the city to make a good faith effort? Here is my concern, and I'm gonna lay out a scenario, and I thought about this. I don't want, I don't want a sweet widow not to know that her husband was owed some money from the city of Lawrence, and she doesn't. Like, if I dropped dead tomorrow, my wife wouldn't know every little place that I got a little money owed, you know what I mean? So I'm concerned that maybe the person is passed, but their family member wasn't maybe aware that, you know, that person had a $75 check or something. And I, I guess I'm getting that is, the saving of whatever money it is that we would get, it just, I, I don't know if I feel right about putting people's money to the bottom line without making some sort of good faith effort or doing everything we can to, to pay people the money that at one point in time was owed to them. Not the duplicate stuff, of course, but genuine things that were owed. So I just hope that we don't take advantage of the unclarity of the law.
And that's, and that's a good, that's a good input. The city has no intention of saving money out of this. This is not even a city statute that you all would have, obviously, ordinance that you all would have approved. This is just a directive that we have been given by the state. Make sure you present it before March 1st, any checks that are two years or older. So we have no intentions of saving the money, but I do, I do, I do acknowledge your, your thought of, could we try to maybe reach out? I think we would, I would, I would entertain, you know, just looking at the logistics, I'm sure it comes with the logistics, you'd have, probably have to get a dedicated person to go through the list, make those phone calls and all that stuff. If that's within our capability, I don't see why we would.
Or use the unclaimed side or whatever, I just.
I believe that's the job of the attorney generals. You would, that money would need to be handed over to the Attorney General's office.
Yes.
That's a state statute.
Okay. And, and that's something that I'm, I'm not opposed to looking into.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, and just, just two other concerns. There are at least one, maybe more, banks on that list, and there's also Marion County Superior Court on that list. So I mean, if we owe monies to the court, we owe monies to the bank, I mean, I think those are phone calls worth making, right? And, and then also, I was curious to know if there are any, like I just mentioned, like the bank and the courts, are there any exclusions to the policy? And, and if there are, is there, is there a mechanism to put that money in suspense? So that, those are sort of the follow-up questions I had after, after, you know, reviewing this multiple times, is just making sure that, you know, we understand that we need to clear some of this off, but are there any exclusions? And would be the first question, and is there any mechanism to put monies that we think might fall into a potential exclusionary bucket into a suspense account so that we make sure that when people are either reissued the check, that we already have those monies set aside to cover that check and it doesn't impact our budget? So, and then I guess the third question is, it seems as though we have checks on there that are like 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, so we haven't been doing this.
Right, because this is a new directive that the state is issuing, and probably because of that same reason, that there are checks that are sitting there since who knows when. So maybe that's one of the reasons that triggered them to do that.
But I'm a little confused, because like, we have an internal policy that was handed to us that has been effective since June 12th of 2017, that outlines what you're asking us to do with, after the two years expires. So does, you know, no matter what the state board of account says, we have had an internal policy within Lawrence whereby we should have been doing that. So we haven't been doing it, apparently, right?
I haven't seen the previous controllers come before you during my time here.
No.
To ask that question, so.
Right, I have never seen this.
Yeah, new to me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. I will be referring this to the Administration Budget and Finance Committee for further The next agenda item is new business, proposal number two. Madam Clerk, can you please read that title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number two, 2025, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, Amending Title One, Article One, Chapter Two, Section 12 of the municipal code regarding common council approval on expenditures of professional service contracts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the behalf of the common council, I am referring proposal number two, 2025, to the Committee of a Whole for consideration. The next agenda item is comments of the administration. Do we have any comments in the administration this evening?
I wanted to address one of the videos that was circulating today that you might have seen in the media. I wanted to present to you the statement that we have, have sent out to our media outlets. So it reads here, "The City of Lawrence, the City of Lawrence Police Department is aware of the recent video circulating on social media depicting an interaction between a law enforcement officer and a civilian. We understand the concerns raised by the members of the community and want to assure the public that this matter is taken seriously. The incident in question is currently under investigation by our department's Internal Affairs Division in accordance with agency protocols. The goal of this investigation is to conduct a thorough and impartial review of the circumstances surrounding the event to understand whether departmental policies and procedures were followed. Transparency and accountability are fundamental to maintaining the trust of the community in which we serve. As chief, we are committed to a fair and objective review of this incident, and appropriate actions will be taken based on the findings." As this is a As this is an active investigation, we ask for the public's patience while all relevant evidence, including body worn camera footage, witness statements, and other reports are thoroughly examined. In the interest of transparency, we provide updates as they become available and are allowed by law. We encourage anyone with additional information related to this incident to come forward and cooperate with the investigation. The community's trust is our utmost importance, and we remain dedicated to upholding the highest standards of professionalism and integrity." So I just wanted to let you guys know, this is what we've, have already sent out to our media outlets and what will be viewed on television as well. Um, I will say that, you know, that is a snippet portion of the whole incident, and that's why, you know, I have decided to make sure that we send this to Internal Investigations for further review and making sure that all departmental policies and procedures were followed. As things come out, uh, as I'm allowed to send out information, I will do so. And I will also make sure that the council will be copied in on any type of press release that we send out to our community. So that's the only thing I have for right now, for tonight, but at least wanted to let you know that we are aware of it. We addressed the situation immediately, and we're taking action wherever it's necessary. We'll make sure that you guys are included in all that correspondence.
Council President, can I ask a question, please?
Yes, absolutely.
For the community, um, the officer, officers that were involved in the incident, um, are they on administrative leave at this time?
Yes, they are.
Okay, I think it's important for folks to know that.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pigsby. Are there any other comments from the administration tonight? We will proceed with citizens' comments. If any citizens wish to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. All citizens' comments shall be limited to three minutes. We will start with Mr. Charles Knapp.
Mr. President and City Council members, my name is Charles Knapp. My wife and I live at 5728 Wallingwood Drive. Um, here again, uh, not so much for the traffic, because it looks, we might be getting something done with that, or at least looked into. But this has to do with the 47-foot tall communications tower they want to put up. We have talked to a realtor who does say that, that those types of structures in neighborhoods do reduce the value of property. So I, and I've got copies of that to hand out, I wasn't sure how to, I need to get them to somebody's to hand them out. But, um, the other thing, uh, there have been recent studies on the last two or three years on the effects of these towers and the microwaves that they put out. I had joked on Lawrence chatter that, you know, somebody's saying, oh, you know, put it up, there's no, there's no evidence that they're harmful. And I said, well, you know, so you want it in your backyard. And after reading some of the things that they've discovered, I would not want this in anybody's backyard. The current FCC regulations do not safeguard the public or the environment from this type of, of, of radio wave. Hopefully that'll be changed now that we have somebody new, um, that's going to be looking at the health of, of Americans, so. But there, there were some non-thermal biological effects that were studied. Those were inconclusive because they were like for just a couple of hours, and it was on a body of water rather than a human or, you know, any kind of living creature. But recent studies are showing that the potential effects, um, they, they negatively affect pregnant women, infants, children, people with medical implants and wildlife in the area. So if you've got a pacemaker or some kind of a pump that is helping you live, these things can affect that, just like they say, you know, it used to be, don't stand in front of your microwave at home if you have a pacemaker. Well, this is the same type of thing, but it's a larger area that's covered with this, and it's not as strong as standing in front of your microwave, but over time, it builds up and it can, it can have an adverse effect on your, on any implants you've got. The studies point to adverse biological effects of EMR, and they include DNA strand breaks, which means that women that are pregnant could have more children that are disabled in some way, just because of the DNA strands that are broken, and this is, this was found in one of these studies. It causes some immune dysfunction, cognitive processing negative effects, stress protein synthesis in the brain, which means that, you know, people that are normally calm, not like me, but they, they end up being stressed easier because of the stuff that's invading the, their, their environment. Stress protein synthesis in the brain, altered brain development, sleep, memory disturbances, increased incidence of ADHD, abnormal behavior and brain tumors, heart tumors, elevated thyroid cancer risk. There are article after article after article about the negative effects, and these are just within the last couple of years. As these things are going up and we're starting to see some of the effects, and they're doing studies now to find out why these are increased, um, problems in the community. So, I know it's not a variance, we all have to vote on it, but I, I do ask that if y'all take a look at this information and you, you know, I, I, they have to submit a permit to our building department here, and I've talked to Renee, and she's gonna let me know when they get the permit, but I really think that we should, I don't know, I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure it's a negative issue for the, the permit. Also, the 47-foot tower, we were told.
I just want to give you a 30-second, yeah, 30 seconds, okay.
Okay, I'm almost done. Tower has, uh, 427-foot tall, 47-foot tower requires either a 15-by-15-foot, uh, foundation or an 18-by-18-foot foundation, depending on the soil conditions. The utility usement back behind these houses is maybe seven feet wide. So I don't know how they're gonna do that, um, but, and, and again, if they go deeper rather than wider, it could affect our groundwater in the area, and we do have several natural springs in the, in the area. So, you know, we, we kind of, as a neighborhood, want to protect, protect all that, so. And I would hope that that would be the same for the general council as well. Thank you all very much.
Warmed up.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Rapp.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Daniel Rapp, 5718 Wallingwood Drive. My comments tonight is on proposal number one that you passed tonight. I have two concerns with that proposal. And yet, my police department is still here. Number one, I was here on 16 October when it was stated that the wage and salary schedule that was approved was the basis for coming up with the 2025 budget. Now, on their proposal one, we are saying that those particular amounts that were used were incorrect. They were, didn't include everything. So that would infer to me that the 2025 budget lacks dollars, quote, unresourced items here to pay these additional things that were, came up in this proposal. Even though tonight I heard a person say that all the items on the budget, dots, i's were dotted, t's were crossed, it's good to go. My question is, where was the budget estimates for these dollars, for these amendment amounts? I assumed that they were going to be an increase. I want to make certain that there is money in the budget to pay the police. That's the first thing. Is the budget there? Second one is actually more important. And that reads on section six, "The amendment set forth above shall be effective immediately upon adoption of this ordinance." And that would mean, first step is you people pass it. Next, next step is for the mayor to sign it. The mayor will not sign it prior to 19 February. My question is for the bu, for the police, what about the six weeks between 1 January and 19 February? It's not covered, you're not paying it, there's no retro pay in this proposal. So my thing is, I want the police to be paid, starting 1 January. This proposal does not do it.
Collective part.
Now, if I miss something, I'm sure that you will inform me of it.
CBA does.
Thank you. That's my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Meeting is adjourned.